So just about to make a start, Mike. So welcome everybody to our venues communications meeting today, Wednesday 9th of November. First item on the agenda is 46522 declarations and exclusive junior interest. None shown, thank you. 46622 apologies for absence, Karen.
We have apologies from councillors, Beretta, Brain, Crawford, Hollis, Jeremy, Parker and McDonald.
Thank you. So 46722 minutes of the meeting held on 12th of October, which was received by full council on 25th of October. It's very happy for me to sign them as a true record of that meeting. So 46822 financial report update, David.
Okay, so I think the financial report was sent round, yes? All right, okay. So we've got the slides here anyway. So just a couple of points. Bar income, as you can see on the slide, is still showing a healthy positive. The annual forecast is 32,000. We're already up to just over 30,000 and we're only month seven. So that one is a real good return. The one that is struggling, to be honest, if you can see two lines, two extra lines down Carnegie complex room hire, we are quite short of our month seven, partly because we had a bit of a poor start to the year. So we've sort of reported that over the last few months meetings. We had a lot of cancellations in the first two months. So we were always going to play catch up. We're now going to go into a couple of months, this month and December, a real busy hire. So we should be able to catch up some of that shortfall, but I'm not too sure whether we're going to hit budget. It depends on how we perform in the last quarter. We usually have good bookings in January, February, March. So fingers crossed, we can make up some more ground, but I think we're going to be just shy of that forecast budget. The markets are slightly up on our forecast for month end. But again, not to paint too negative picture, we are going into the winter months. So we're hoping that we can just hold our own on those. We've just picked up a new trader, the key cutting guy on a Tuesday, and there's another trader on a Saturday. So hopefully we can, we can do more of those specialist markets. We haven't really had too many specialist markets, but Christmas is really, really full. We've got, we've got probably 10 food vendors for our Christmas light switch on and also some gift stores. So again, that should show a bit of an income for, for next month. On the expenditure side, what it does show is it reflects some of the increase in purchase costs. So although the bar is climbing in terms of income, relatively speaking, so is costs, the costs are slightly down to what we usually operate at, even though our gross profit is something like 46, 47%, which is, which is no mean feat in itself. But we are trying to keep up with price fluctuations. And as everybody knows, you know, that's week by week, to be honest, but we're trying to keep on top of it and we'll adjust our costs. Although we're trying to remain competitive, we will adjust our costs accordingly. So hopefully we're going to hover around that 50% as a, as a minimum. Our catering is the same, but again, our tea room income is really positive. I thought perhaps we'd have a turn after the summer, but, but yesterday was absolutely heaving in the tea room. We've actually had to purchase an additional table and install that today. Again, really packed this morning. So hopefully we can keep it going through the remainder of the year. And then as soon as we get to spring again, I'm sure we'll be, we'll be back to, to what we were doing through the summer, which was really good. So unless there's any questions, the one that is, sorry, I'll just mention the, the repairs and maintenance, as I said at the last meeting, I know several weren't here the last meeting, but we are, unfortunately, we've got a lot of servicing and periodic checks that are being done at the moment. So we are spending out a lot more money than we forecast, but that's not likely to, to have to be checked again for at least a couple of three years. Some of them are fixed three year, fixed wiring costs and things like that. So that is a bit of anomaly at the minute.
Any questions?
So overall, the income that we're getting in is then helping you to pay for repairs and maintenance, which is required. If we didn't have all that going on, we would still have the bill for the repair and maintenance. That's what I'm trying to get at.
If we didn't have the sluggish start after the dreaded word Covid, and people had a bit more confidence to hit the ground running in April, I think our hire costs would have been higher. If the hire costs would have been higher, the additional income that we have made on the bar, for instance, would have compensated for the additional repairs. So that's where we want to be in an ideal world. So as confidence increases and people are starting to come back to, to all the venues and, and social activities, hopefully we can maintain that increase in, in, in bar events, et cetera. And we can underpin our repairs and maintenance as we go. So I don't think that's going to be a problem going forward. It's just that unfortunately, he lacked a bit of confidence early in the year.
Mike?
Thank you very much. Yeah, I think we've really done very well. You know, I am encouraged by the suggestions that people are getting back to normal in terms of organising activities. I hope that will be reflected on in Carnegie. We couldn't answer about the start of the year, that was beyond our control. And thanks to all the staff who do so well. I wanted to mention one staffing situation in particular, if I may briefly, David. You talked about TV room being heaving yesterday. How do we cope with that? I mean, normally we have one person on duty. Is it, is there a way of getting around that?
So, so it's a bit of a, all hands to the pump. Hazel's smiling because she's usually roped in as well. But at the moment, yes, it's really, really busy for Becky. She's doing a grand job. She really is. She's, she's sort of almost like the star performer at the moment because it is that busy. We usually have some, some regular help on a Wednesday because that's where we try and advertise our afternoon teas. And it is busy today as a result of that. And she gets help on a Saturday. But what we were doing, Mitch, who is Tom's replacement, is doing a little bit of analysis on the timings of the day when sales are. And it is, it is almost from the time we open through till about one o'clock. So what we try to do is to look within our staff team at the moment and say, look, have we got time that we can go over and help Becky between these periods? More often than not, it works sometime when people are on holidays. We haven't got a lot of sickness that goes through the Bem team at the moment, touch wood. So we're coping. I'm looking at Hazel for a bit of confirmation. We are, we are, we are trying to cope. But I think we're going to get to a point, certainly when spring hits again, Mike, that we're going to have to reevaluate it. But hopefully we can do it from, you know, continuation of good sales. I mean, there has been a significant increase. Yesterday, yesterday, our income was up probably 30% on what we were doing in August. And this is November. So I'm really encouraged by the way that, you know, it is actually.
It's a problem of success. That's, I mean, that's great. And we didn't, when we started, it didn't seem obvious that it was going to get to that stage.
So what we also are looking forward to is when we get to spring, when we will have hopefully an initial person that can come in on a seasonal basis, is we can actually maximise that outside space as well. Because currently, I know on a Tuesday, Simon, who's our market supervisor, he gets the tables and chairs out. But quite honestly, it's so busy, we can't cope with outside as well. But we will do, we'll, we'll make sure that we factor that in for our plan, spring onwards of next year. We still put the tables and chairs out because it's nice for people just to rest their, rest their feet sometimes.
Always sit up on a dry day. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, I think, yeah, the tables and chairs is another factor of making the marketplace look busy and getting people to migrate to it. So I think we need to keep that going and service that especially. Just one question on marketing communications. We've got no expenditure. So are you telling me you've got a massive expenditure? Or I don't want to throw money away, but at the same time, have we got a plan?
No, that, that is, that's a mistake. And I need to pick that up with, with Alan. I can assure you that we are spending to our forecast budget. I mean, for instance, you know, that is the area of our budget where all the big posters would, would, would be flyers and things like that. And we've certainly done that. So I think what he's done is he's, he's sort of merged it all together in some of the other costs. And I think we just need to have a conversation where he can, we can pull them out. So, but that, but again, that one is going to budget. So we're not overspending. We're not really underspending either. We've not got, you know, we've got a little bit of slack as an underspend that we can look at. But we did, that's one of the reasons why we purchased the software for the Flip Snack Turning Page newsletter, which has been really encouraging. And we've got a lot of feedback off that. So that's, that was a positive. But again, that was minimal cost, to be honest. It was a few hundred pounds.
Right, we'll move on then, if that's okay, to 46922 marketing report. Hazel's with us this month to lead us through. So I think that has been circulated, but if you want to take us through.
Yeah, so it's fine. So they should have all been sent out to you. So this month, we've had a variety of events advertised across our poster sites. The rotunda is still being used. And we've got our third party hirers who are taking things out as well, with using QR codes to link through to websites and things. And I am speaking to any hirers that are coming in and making sure that the QR code and the, the full information is on the posters, because I know it's been missed in bits and pieces. And to make sure the venue is listed on it as well, because it has been missed in the past, which doesn't help people trying to buy tickets. We've got people coming in directly to book in the office. We're speaking to them as they come in and feedback from this is showing, you know, they're seeing the poster sites in town, because it's just a quick kind of, oh, where did you see it advertised? And quite a few are coming in from poster sites in town, the rotunda, which is good. Also looking at social media pages and our newsletter. Newsletter is receiving positive feedback. I think quite a few councillors come back about it as well, which is nice to hear. And we're obviously pushing further reach for that. So it goes out through our email subscribers, but I'm also aware that not everyone subscribes to that. So it's being put onto the website as the town out to website as a news article. It's also on Facebook pages. And if anyone emails in and asks about tickets, because occasionally we get them, I will ping it back with, this is what we've got available, here's our website. But equally, if you subscribe to our newsletter, I've attached it below and I'll just pop the link on there so that they've got that straight away as well. And that's also highlighting the other work we do around, which is good. We're continuing to work with online analytics. So it's things like the charts and things you see. There was a bit of an issue with the charts processing this time around. So unfortunately, you haven't got your wavy lines everybody likes, but you have got the feedback of our reach and engagement and things, which is the bit we look at to see how well we're doing. I can also set targets on there. So obviously, I'm learning about it myself a bit, but I set a stretch target of followers, thinking it was way out of our reach. And I checked the other day, we've actually hit it and overpassed it, which is brilliant. We're engaging where appropriate on our pages. So we are responding within reason, obviously looking into our current communications policy, liking people's comments and feeding back if they ask about ticket links. I'm just popping a link in there and responding, but obviously we have to follow our media policy with that, because we don't want ongoing dialogue as such on those. So that's fine. And taking back feedback on it. It is read, it is noted, and we use it to inform our next events going forward and things like that. In terms of offline marketing, again, poster sites being used, we're working with community groups distributing posters. So we've got two quite large groups that have meetings across East Anglia, and they're distributing our posters around for us. We're also distributing some posters ourselves around the town centre. And the Christmas ones will be going out this week, hopefully. Covered that bit about. So, yeah, and online marketing, obviously, social media platforms being used, scheduling posts across different dates and times to catch wider audiences, as was noted in a previous meeting. We, the booking website is active, it's been updated. As soon as I get more information on, as soon as ticket links go live, the links are being sent to the promoters as well. So it's all going out at the same time. Newsletter has been pinned to the top of our social media pages. So it's instantly accessible. So if anyone clicks on it, if you go onto our Facebook pages, there's a couple of pinned posts. Normally, I'll put the newsletter on there and I think Christmas is on there at the moment, or anything that I think will drive kind of instant, people will go looking for instantly. So it should be easily accessible. It's also obviously being spread across the forums and wider areas. So we're looking at some forums from dearums, I think Stow Market, Dis and surrounding areas, just to try and catch some, pass some trade from Again, feedback's being gained for online and we're speaking to people on time, onsite at the time of the events as well. And we're making sure things like the Christmas light switch on and wider town events are going onto the town council website as a news article. So if anyone does click on there, we're just trying to make it more accessible for people and broaden our range of areas that we market. Hopefully it's working. The newsletter, you should have all had a link to that. I think everyone gets it emailed anyway. But in case you missed it, it was on the marketing report. I've just popped a link on it, should you want to go back and have a look. In terms of social media data, we're doing really well. Town council page is performing brilliantly. The last month's reach and engagement has increased. So we're about, we're pushing at about 17% for engagement. Now, we've been having a look at, having a look at where we should be and what kind of engagement you look at for a social media page. For a small business, you aim for 5% engagement to reach. We're hitting 17% for the town council page, which is obviously well above target, which is brilliant. Once you get the brand recognised, so, you know, big, big soft drink brands as such, they don't necessarily push the engagement as much because it's an instantly recognisable brand. But we're obviously not quite at that point yet. But it's just proven that our engagement is good and people are reacting to our posts. On the report, I said that there were, it was 20,000 reach. It's actually pushed up to, well, it was over 1,500 more this morning for reach. So that's good. With 25 new followers in the last 25 days, which again, is almost a follower a day, which is good. Facebook's for Carnegie is the same. This, the engagement on Facebook for Carnegie is 22%, which again, is well above what we are aiming for, which is brilliant. And the Guildhall Tea Room is, although the reach is lower and our followers are lower at this point, because we are obviously trying to build that still, we're at 23% engagement. So people are engaging with posts, people are reading them and responding to them. It's not just a case of seeing it and clicking past it. Because this, this is, engagement is measured on any likes, comments, shares. But it's also measured on if they're clicking into the photo to have a look through the photos, not just kind of seeing them on the screen. You have to physically click into it. Facebook registers that. So that's good. It means that obviously the more engagement we get, the more likely we are to have ticket bookings and responses. And people are going to be sharing it with their friends and getting word out that, you know, the tea room is a great place to have lunch. And the Carnegie is a good place to have, okay, to visit as a venue. Obviously, we're still working with hirers tagging in, which is helping our reach. Because if they share it on their page and we share it on our page, it just doubles the amount of people seeing it. So, yeah, we are doing well for online and offline. Obviously, it's harder to measure, but getting responses from people saying, I've just seen your poster on the rotunda. I'd like to come and book some tickets is brilliant. We obviously would love more feedback like that from people, but quite a lot of people are coming into the office now and booking tickets, I think, particularly for, I'll be a jury's out. I think I sold 15 tickets in one day, just from people popping into the office.
I'm saying it's just come out, isn't it?
Yeah, so that's then just come out. We've also, there is a poster in town. I haven't actually put the event out on social media yet, because it's not till March next year. It's purely a poster in town and we have sold 33 tickets for one of our other events already, which before it's even gone out on social media. So it proves that those sites are working. It didn't go out in newsletter either, because we just hadn't got to that point. We'd literally just been sent the poster, so I popped it up. And, yeah, to sell 33 tickets off the back of that was good so far. So once that goes up, hopefully that one will sell very well.
Any questions, Hazel?
Yeah, Breckham run websites, don't they? And they cover a vast area. I'm just thinking about some of the shows that we put on, you know, if Breckham put them out there as well, I don't know whether they can do this or not. But it's, it's, it's just a fall. Because, you know, Breckham butts into everything we put on, because you see them answering them, you know, that, that counts for a while. But then Breckham, another show to make. So I don't know if there is a way that they would do that. Because they do, they do put things on there from other areas. And I'm thinking, I think we've got, is it a Sainsbury? Not Sainsbury, I don't know.
The medium one.
The medium one, right? There was a, because they go around the country, I think the newest one I've seen recently is King's Lynn, but it's always in King's Lynn. And it could be that King's Lynn might want to come to here. So it's, you know, hitting on with the councils as well. So I don't know whether they're allowing that, but I can't, I can't see what the problem is.
Yeah, so you can list events on the Breckham council page. There's a, there's a form you fill out and you can list events. We tend to do it with town events. But I will try and speak to Nathan and see if they will share wider, kind of just in-house events as well. And I'll have a word with him and see if that's possible. I know the town events you list on there and you can go on, you can click onto the page and there's just the what's on page and it just lists everything in the areas. I'm not sure if they do ticketed events, but I will have a word.
I think they're, they're, they're not as keen to put ticketed events on, commercial events, simply because they cover five big towns and all the towns put lots of different events on. So I think they would just be flooded, their social media sites would just be flooded with commercials. But they're, they're, they're always happy to do the town events, which are the free, pre B events to the residents of each town. So they're more than happy to support us on that.
Do they have a Facebook presence which you could share your newsletter on? Because that seems to be quite succinct. You're hearing lots of things with that. And people can then dip into it if they like those. And then they're swamped with a volume of stuff.
Yeah.
But if anybody else got anything, I've got a few bits. Chris?
That's a great one. Do we put the link for a magazine in the Breckham magazine?
Not currently. So it goes out on our pages currently. We've kind of keeping it very localised at the moment, because obviously I'm where it's, is a town event one. But, yeah, we'll, we'll have a look at that and see if we can.
Is this Breckham voice you're talking about?
Yeah, see if they would be willing to share that. I'm not sure if they do share, obviously, town council magazines currently, but I'll speak to Nathan and see if we can get that going forward.
Yeah, definitely worth exploring that. They should be supporting the five mile events and obviously the largest one, which should be. Just a couple of things, the newsletter, I think is great. And obviously you showed me the wedding venue one that you've done. What are we doing in terms of marketing, the wedding venue aspect?
So wedding venue marketing, it was put onto our Facebook page. And I believe I reshared it, or I may have been due to reshare it. I'm resharing it kind of periodically, because I don't obviously want to flood everyone with it. But anyone that speaks to Emma, who is the person that sets up weddings and things, anyone who kind of inquires at all about weddings, she sends it straight to them. She sends it straight, the magazine straight to it. I don't know about wider marketing of that. I will speak to Emma and see.
Well, I presume at the moment, you also need to be, bear in mind what's happening with the Guildhall Towers and availability of the rooms. And you can do, so you don't want to probably be too flooded with inquiries until we know.
Yeah, yeah, I'll talk, I'll talk about towers in a bit. So we, yeah, we, we should be okay. But, but one of the things that we've got the link obviously with the Norfolk Registry Office. So there's a link as any other licensed venue has. But that's something we really do need to try and get out to a lot more. But the encouraging thing is, and it's probably off the back of the newsletter, we've already got five weddings, four, five weddings booked for next year or from January onwards. We've actually got one in January. So, you know, we are starting to get inquiries and turning those into bookings. So it's really good.
Yeah. So the wedding, there is a double page in the wedding, the weddings and newsletters.
So one of the things I spoke to Hazel about was having a supplementary sheet with local information of hotels and car parks. Because I think free car parking is something that, you know, we ought to sell and make more use of. So that could be sent out as a separate PDF. So that people can give to their guests, you know, saying, if you come to this wedding, then you can stay at the Bell or you can stay at Travelodge.
You can park in IP.
And similarly, I'm wondering if there's a scope within our newsletter to have a lot of parking bit within it or half a page, just to show people where the venue is compared to those free car parks. Because we've, when you go out for a night, if you go to Norwich, you end up paying for parking in reality. It's another thing that we can sell, you know, comfortably, it don't cost you as much to go out, I think.
I mean, to try and make the newsletter more than just a marketing document in terms of event posters and things like that. We are trying to create sort of additional editorials in there. We, we, we did Setford in Bloom when, when that was relevant at the time. So again, we could just use that as one of our articles.
Yeah, we're doing like post event write-ups as well.
Because it is to do with us. The thing is with the newsletter, it's got to, it's got to be relevant to us. It's not a, you know.
So when's your next one due out?
It will be the December issue, which I've started working on.
Okay. So I'm just thinking the pantomime tends to be one that probably featured there because you've got six performances that.
Yeah. So it's, it's a totally free thing. I think there's a few things have been, a few queries have come in about whether it's paid for or not. If it's not, it's completely free. So anyone that does an event with us, at some point I will contact them and just say, just let you know you're going to newsletter. Sometimes we don't let them know they're doing it. We just pop it in. Because obviously, it's quite nice to have the video content and things as well that they send us. But yeah, pantomime obviously will be quite a big one. We'll put in there. But yeah, it's just part of our kind of main marketing package that, you know, we put their posters up around town. We've used social media, but we're adding this in, obviously at no extra cost to them. But, yeah, Panto going. And then we'll have things like, if there's any kind of major mayor events and things, they'll be written up and popped in there. And it's just whatever's relevant over the last two months that we had to school. The schools team did a write-up, not this month, the last newsletter that went out as well, just to highlight the things that we're doing as well.
I think sometimes it's just small things. If you take that man that's going on to market, the key man, we haven't had a key man there for a few years. But that's an ideal thing to bring in. Oh, we haven't got a golden weight of that goes. We're going to town, we can nip on the market.
Yeah. So we haven't, we've spoken about spotlight on market traders, haven't we before? And just trying to maybe put some posts out. Or, yeah, we could use the newsletter just as a quick spotlight on these are our market traders. This is what they sell at this point. And then hopefully, if other market traders see that, they'll think, okay, we get a little bit of advertising this way. And, yeah.
Or another example is the U3A. U3A, I've used the all for the day. So you've got a couple of photos to say, you know, local U3A, da, 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 da. Because that's what people are interested in reading about. And then, yeah.
So the other thing, I think I mentioned last month, with the, where are we with the dispensers and the newsletter? Sorry, the fault of three month events thing taken out.
So we do, we do have the flyers. The flyers do go out too. But we, what we need to do now is to have a, another hit. Most of the shops are, well, all the shops are back, trading normally. So we need to revisit that and try and get those, get those out to a wider audience. I mean, we have our regulars that we, you know, they take.
We're just thinking the hotels is somewhere, yeah, you have presence there.
Yeah, I know. And Brenda was talking about U3A. U3A actually take our flyers into some of the areas that they also advertise U3A in. So that's good. So we're getting hirers that are helping us do that as well. So that's good.
And the last thing I think was David and I spoke about the Carnegie building and having a sign on the side facing the library, which is that something we can build into the budget? Or is it, because if you come up from School Lane Car Park, you just see this building, you don't know what it is. The idea of having a Carnegie written across there, at least you identify the building immediately.
So I, so I'm glad you reminded me on that. I will, I will, I will, I will write that down. Because we currently are having the roof done. We did, we did as a committee talk about this a few years back, you know, a good few years back. And we talked about the Carnegie on the side of the building that Stuart's mentioned, with the size of the lettering that you see on the side of the library. And it was reasonable, to be honest, at the time. But the big cost is, how do you get up there? So the cost of the sign is cheap, but it's scaffolding. Now, we've already got scaffolding on that side of the. So the cost of the sign is cheap, but it's scaffolding. Now we've already got scaffolding on that side of the building. So if we can get the signage done, then before they dismantle that scaffolding, we could probably get our sign guys to go up there and, and, uh, and put it up. So I will, I will check on that as a priority because we don't wanna miss out on that.
No, nothing really good.
No, we can't.
Right. Thank you very much, Hazel. So we move on to four seven oh twenty-two, consider the annual view of the market top. We touched upon this, I think, last month, and we were talking about things and additional services. I think Dave's risen that for us with some.
So the, yeah, so the decision, well, the, the, the imprint from the committee, uh, at the last meeting was that we wouldn't raise the basic, um, market tolls, um, for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Um, but what we were, uh, looking at is some of the additional services that are attached to the market. So for most of the traders, they will see no difference. Um, because the services basically come in three different, uh, areas. Um, it's power supply. So currently if someone wanted to hook up to, um, the electrics, there is an additional charge. I must admit, we've waived that over the last few years, simply because we were trying to encourage more traders. The problem at the moment is everywhere is, 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 um, is suffering, is utility costs. Um, so it's something that we can't ignore, I'm afraid. We do have to look at it going forward, but it will only affect those traders who actually want it. So if someone, you know, doesn't wanna pay for the electric hookup to light their stall, then they'll have to come up with other means to do that through the winter months. Um, I can only think of two traders, um, that currently use the electric hookup and that's the fruit and veg. Um, because they, they're here so early in the morning, it's pitch black through the winter months. Um, and also the fishmonger. Um, and again, another area that you, we need to look at is waste disposal. And those two traders are the key users of our waste bins. And again, I've spoken to both of them as committee asked me to do, to say that, you know, there is possibly, um, two options. Uh, one is removing the waste service. Uh, lots of markets have done this and it's not just, uh, um, an increased cost. Uh, I know other markets in the area have not been doing this for four or five years to try and cut costs and retain the, the toll fees. Um, I've spoken to both of them, said if, if the options aren't to pay an additional fee or to remove it, we'll pay an additional fee. The traders have said though, that they want bins that they can almost, well, guarantee that it would be exclusive use to them. Now the fruit and veg on a Saturday have their bins at the rear of their stall. So it's within, you know, their area to control. Um, the, the fishmonger is the other one and, um, and again, she has it to the rear of her stall. So it would be really their bins. Now the fishmonger uses probably half a bin per market. They come both Tuesday and Saturday. So you're talking one bin per week. The fruit and veg on it, they only trade on a Saturday, um, but they use two full bins. So what I'm advocating is that, uh, is, and again, you can either have an exclusive bin and, and a bin, and a bin is thirteen pounds to, um, to use and tip the bin. Uh, but my proposal on that slide there looks at heavy use, which would be a full bin at ten pounds. Because we've never, we've never done this before. So it is gonna be a bit of a, um, a wake-up call for some of them. Um, but they're happy to do it. So again, as the mark, you know, as we're trying to retain our traders and hopefully improve them. Um, this is not a nominal cost, but it's pretty much recovering the cost that, uh, for us. Um, so both of those will be paying, um, for the heavy use, which is a full bin, although the fishmonger over the full week. The other thing that we really do need to, um, be strict on and look at is the use of our equipment. Um, I must admit, um, we got a grant from Breckham District Council to buy twenty gazebo's, must be ten years ago now. And we have gotten huge use out of those. Um, but we are literally down to nine gazebo's now because the rest of them are beyond repair. And we've never really charged for gazebo's as such, not as an additional, uh, fee. A gazebo has, uh, has reduced in cost, but you can't get a gazebo. We've got sides. So you'd only have the main canopy. You can't get it for less than four hundred pounds. So if you're gonna charge ten pounds for a gazebo, it's gonna take forty visits to get your money back. And I think we do need to do that because we need to build up our stock again. Um, and I must admit, is it gonna affect the traders? To be honest, I think we've spoilt our traders in some respects because I know two traders that use our gazebo's who actually have stalls and canopies themselves, but it's just easy for us to put them up. And if we don't charge, it's an added bonus. So I think we have to be a bit stricter. We're not gonna raise the general fees. But for additional services, if you want, we will have to make a charge. Now for those two traders I mentioned, they've got a choice. They either pay or they use their own. So, but we desperately need to try and generate a pot of money that we can increase our stock of pop-up gazebo's or replenish and repair the ones that we've already got. So I think we've already agreed or, or in principle at the last meeting not to raise the general fees. But what I'm asking for is clauses within the market rules that we've already got. Um, that we introduce these additional services, which the trader can use or not.
Brenda, you want to come in?
Yeah. Um, well, the first point was, um, the bins. I, I don't know how they pack their bins, but I can imagine that when you've got a load of the way to just throwing it in there. So it might be that he actually only needs one bin if he was packing it down properly. Do, do, do you see what I mean?
Yes, absolutely.
Just chucking a cardboard box in and he's like, didn't he? I'll say, now, you, you know, you've shortened me.
Yeah.
Space.
I, I would say that the one that, that uses the bins more than anyone else is Mr. Seakin's on a Saturday. And I would say Scott, like his father before him, um, is probably the most professional trader I've ever come across. And you will see his staff ju- jump on those cardboard. They actually do flatten them.
Yeah.
But I know what you mean. Half the time they chuck a, a box without flattening, but he does. But he's just such a big stall and he does a lot of trade and he uses the two bins. But you're right. If they've got to pay for it, they'll make sure they maximise the use out of one bin before they.
So is my mental, you know, it's in my mental thoughts as well.
Yeah.
Uh, and the other point was the gazebo's. Um, it's all right saying, like, um, you know, we charge this, but because we need to put a little bit in reserve.
Yeah.
But as long as that is ring fenced for that and doesn't get, because, because what happens, we say, right, we're gonna do this, this, this and this and this. Normally it's something to say, but where's the money that we was charging a bit extra for the gazebo? And it, and the money's not there. It's, it's, it disappears into the evening, you know. So where's it gone?
Well, the one, one thing to do that is to certainly create a line within the budget.
Yeah.
That says in additional income, which is market equipment hire.
I would say that.
Um, because then once you've got a line in there, then as a committee, you've got, you've got an increased, uh, opportunity to ensure where that's purchased. And no one's gonna argue if you're purchasing like for like, really. So we're hiring a gazebo. We're trying to increase our stock. So we can introduce a, a budget line.
Mike. Um, you have fruit and veg again. Um, David, how, how many gazebo's does he use of fruit?
Well, there is.
Sorry?
There is gazebo.
Oh, he doesn't.
So, so with Scott, the only increase he will see is, um, waste. So it's gonna cost him another, um, twenty quid if he's actually, as Brenda said, if he, if he carries on using two bins, it's an extra twenty quid. But the difference between not paying twenty quid for waste and having it removed as a service to him is gonna be a damn sight more than twenty quid if he's gotta go and.
How much does it cost us?
It, it would, so we would still be, um, subsidising that by six pound for two bins.
Yeah. And, and so who does use our gazebo as if anyone?
So, so basically, um, you've got the clothing trader and the fudge and cheese guy on a Saturday, he uses them. But they have both got their own gazebo's, but it's just, it's convenience that we do it.
Yeah.
So he's got a choice. He can either hire them or, or actually put his own up.
Yeah.
I don't think they'll, it's not something that they're gonna leave over. It's just that they're through inconvenience that they're either gonna pay or.
Yeah.
Or use their own.
Thank you. Chris, anything? So do we need, so just back to the original stalls, we're talking about going on the grid system, which we're in principle.
Which doesn't mean.
Last year, last month.
Yeah.
Um, and so we just need to agree.
To include these in the, uh, in the clauses within the market rules.
Okay. So do we need to have a proposal in secondary for that? Or do we, can we just take that as a recommendation from his group if we're happy? Presumably if we're voting on it, we need to.
So it's within our terms and conditions, uh, reference, sorry. It's in the power of this committee to review annually market tolls and venue fees. We did the venue fees last time. So it's a res- resolution that, um, you, you make these changes if that's, if that's what you wish to do.
So are we all in favour with that? And shall I have hands please? Yep, unanimous.
Yeah.
Can I just say with the proviso that we've got the.
The line identifying the.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, okay.
Thank you all. So four seven one twenty-two and community engagement. Well, Hazel's alluded to some of the stuff that we've been doing. Um, Chris might switch on probably the thing. Remembrance, what are we doing in terms of making people aware of that? And I know this is civic and town heritage, town heritage, but it is a communication aspect and it's an area where we as a council will get criticised.
Yep.
Um, and I just wanna make, reiterate the idea of a, a service sheet. I know the RBL were doing this. But I think if we could have a PDF available on our social media or so that people could, if they wanted to, could either download it and print it out or have it on their phone. So that they're still able to engage on the day would save a lot of things we can do that.
Yeah. So I was actually looking through last night, I was looking for something else, but I was looking through our previous social media, um, posts and things, looking for something. But I was looking at the old remembrance stuff and we did seem to put quite a lot out in terms of pictures and stuff given. Um, but I will speak to Carrie into, um, about getting that on there. And I'll also make sure there's a post that goes out on that on the website to say when, where. I know most people know anyway, but it's just in case we catch anyone else. And just make sure to next button to the website and the social media channels.
Brilliant. And the other thing I'll bring up here is Twitter. We, you've got the other thing. Is that something we're moving away from? Or is that something that, you know, it's passe or with the current changeover on it?
Yeah, there's a bit of a changeover on Twitter. Um, at the moment we're still using it. It, it hasn't been used as much because I have been focusing on the, um, Instagram and Facebook. Purely because I think if you stretch yourself too much over different channels, you're not gonna get the same amount of content. But, um, yeah, I will review our Twitter and make sure something's going on there.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if we can host both pages. Um, but I'll have a look at that.
When you say host both pages?
We've currently got the Setford Town Council one, but we've also got a, a town events Carnegie one, but I don't know what, I, I'll have to have a look through what, what that was previously.
I Twitter presence of some kind.
Yeah.
If you, when you do get something you wanna impart to everybody, you're hitting all the various channels.
Yeah. So, cause we've also picked up the, um, I did highlight in my last report, the Setford Town Events page that was inactive, had just been sat there and we realised that, um, there was actually quite a following on it. I think it's over a thousand people. So we've picked up and we just, we simply just share the posts we've already posted. So anything I post on the Carnegie or the town council page in terms of events, I just share onto that page as well. Um, it's not a new post, so it can take too long or anything out, but it just catches a new audience. But yeah, I'll have a Twitter and make sure that's.
Okay, thank you. Um, four seven two twenty-two, committee officers update.
Uh, so, um, the only thing I just wanna, uh, just bring to committees attention. I know the town clerk has spoken to the councillors at planning, I think, and just giving you a, a, an update over the twin towers, uh, of the Guildhall. Uh, the twin towers, the, uh, repair of the twin towers was always part of our Guildhall Heritage Hub, uh, grant. Um, so we must do that as well as the, um, the dorma window above the porch, which is in a dire state. Um, so, um, we've had a, uh, another condition survey. They've pinpointed where the issues are and, uh, offered up, uh, ideas of how we can go about the repairs. The biggest problem is, uh, the configuration of the roof is, you know, has always been a problem. Uh, it's always a problem when you're cleaning, covering the things because there's various different elevations. Um, so, uh, we've contacted, um, a company who will hopefully be installing the scaffold within the next fortnight. Uh, we had a meeting with, um, the architects, uh, and, uh, Breckham's Historic Building Officer, um, on Tuesday. And there was a couple of additional suggestions that he made that we just had to revise, um, the scaffolding, uh, setup plan. Um, so it's just delayed it for a week or so, but it should be up, um, and set ready for repairs to start within a, within a fortnight. The biggest issue for me, not, notwithstanding the fact that, um, you know, we have a responsibility to, um, keep the Guildhall in good repair. But from another viewpoint, um, it's extremely busy. So I was very keen to make sure that the entrance would be unobstructed and we can carry on business almost, um, as usual. And, uh, and I can say they've been really clever in not just securing the clock tower with the scaffolding. Um, but also making sure that we've got unhindered access to a degree of the, uh, of the entrance. So we can carry on business as usual. Um, I was a bit worried that, uh, we might have to re-look at Christmas hot switch on. But no, everything is okay and we're going ahead as normal. Uh, one of the things that we, um, are conscious of and we will have to look at once the scaffolding is up as part of this committee is, um, we want to put some hoardings up because it's likely to be up for a, a, a good length of time. You know, it's probably gonna be up for about eighteen months because the repairs are that extensive. Um, but we wanna put some hoardings up. So it, we're gonna look at, you know, I mean, when you see these new shop developments and town centre developments, you get, or, I mean, we did it as Stuart, I was talking to Stuart yesterday about it. When we did, um, the, uh, the Riverside development, we had some of the sort of, um, images on the hoardings. I think we've just been successful with the first phase of the Heritage Master Plan. Um, and the next twelve months, we'll be going through a lot of different events to try and establish where we put together our final bid for the Heritage Master Plan, some of the consultation events, some of the micro events that will promote what we do. And I think this could be an absolute, um, an advantage if we do it properly, that we can advertise some of those activities. And what we're trying to strive to, to, um, to create a, a new Guildhall that everybody can enjoy in the future. So, um, so it will be going up in the next fortnight. Um, but I just wanted to, uh, to, to allay any fears that, you know, it will be business as usual in terms of, um, going into the Guildhall.
Brenda.
Yeah. Can you explain that again? So if I look at down by the river where they've done all them shops, that's what you mean by?
We're talking about the anchor also, when we did the anchor, if you remember, we had that thirteen year.
So it might not be, Brenda, it might not be that solid hoarding. It might be, um, it might be some sort of, uh, vinyl type hoarding that we can probably be changed on a reasonable.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, but that's, that's costs rather than have.
Yeah.
I don't know, um, some old pictures affect for that.
Yeah.
Because if you're gonna keep changing it.
Yeah.
That's, it, it is something that we've got to think within our budget is.
Yeah.
We've got to keep buying new ones.
Yeah.
How long do we keep each one up for? That, that, that's what I was thinking of.
So with the first phase of the Heritage Master Plan, um, grant, um, there is money in there to deliver certain events. And we could factor some of those changes of vinyls within, within those costs because it will serve a purpose. It will advertise to people, you know, what we're doing. And also with QR codes and things like that, it'll be a great way to expand the consultation process.
Right. Thank you. Um, David, you, you spoke about having this scaffolding up and then taking advantage of it to put up the Carnegie on a particular side.
Yeah.
Are there other things we can do as well? I'm thinking for example, trivial enough, leaves in the gutter.
Yeah.
And there is now, or used to be a tree ground on product, perhaps that's already gone.
Nice.
Um, and it's only painting that could be done or refurbishing windows if we've got the use of the scaffolding.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, um, as I said, it's, uh, on the Guildhall, it's likely to be up for eighteen months. So I think we need to take. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, um, as I said, it's, uh, on the Guildhall, it's likely to be up for eighteen months. So I think we need to take advantage of that um. In every which way, really. Um. So, yeah.
Thank you. But nothing further than I call meeting to close. Thank everybody for their attendance and.
Well, nothing below the line then.
Well, not that I'm aware of.